Okay, call this meeting of the ISD 624, meeting to order, board meeting. Would the clerk please read the role?
New master? New master? Thompson? Arcand?
Here.
Bellloyd?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Ellison, here. Mullen, absent. New master?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, would everybody please rise? And I guess we have the flags over here to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have an agenda before us, and do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Ellison, is there a second? Okay, mic problems there. Okay, Ms. Thompson, second. All those in favor, say aye.
We have to do a poll.
Oh, we have to do roll call because of the remote?
Yep.
Okay, would clerk please read the role?
New master?
Aye.
Thompson? Arcand?
Aye.
Bellloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Okay, we have an agenda for tonight. And then the next item on the list here on the agenda is the, let's see, I guess it's the approval of the consent agenda. And if, are there any questions or comments from the board with regard to this? Okay, would the clerk please read the role?
We need a motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do need a motion. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Dr. Arcand, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Thompson. Any questions or comments with regard to the consent agenda? Seeing none, would the clerk please read the role?
New master?
Aye.
Thompson? Aye. Arcand?
Aye.
Bellloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Okay. And then one comment I want to make too with regard to the consent agenda is once again thanking those who have made donations to the district. We always, every month, have various individuals and entities that provide donations, monetary or in-kind, equipment, materials, supplies, so forth. And we are very, very, very thankful for those items. Okay, with that, we move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is what we call public forum. And that is where individuals, members of the public, can address the board. In order to do so, however, would need to have a card filled out and submitted and presented to myself and to the board. Is there anybody that would like to address the board at this time? Okay, there's two, okay. Yeah, I don't have any cards. They, I believe, are in the entrance area?
Jody, are you in the entryway? Do you have cards for?
I have questions.
Okay.
Ma'am, if you would like to come up and, let's see, yeah.
This is what I was looking at.
Yep, okay. Oh, is that Erin?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have my glasses on. I should, okay.
If you can see with the mask and the glasses, you're doing better than me.
All right. We'll have you fill out the card afterwards, Erin.
Okay, that's fine. Yes, she wrote down my information, too. So my name is Erin Florin, and I am one of the founders and the leaders of the families of kids who have dyslexic students in our White Bear Lake School District. Just take probably about three minutes here. Good evening, White Bear Lake School Board. I've met many of you and wanted to convey continued appreciation for your work during such historic times. I come here in light of Dyslexia Awareness Month, but also in advocacy for all struggling readers. Myself and others have spoken previously, twice to this board and once to the 1916 board on this topic. I won't reiterate what has already been covered before and happy to recommunicate it by email upon request. As you are already aware, Minnesota's performance gap persistently remains the lowest in the nation. According to the Minnesota Federal Reserve Bank, our minorities score lower than the national average. Statistics from the National Report Card reveal that Minnesota only has 38% of eighth graders at reading level. It's hard to hear the ugly truth, but our own district has dismal, persistent, low MAP scores. How is this acceptable? What business would keep investing in something that produces such small outcomes? How is this not a hot topic in our communities and schools? How are educators and families not outraged? How have we gotten used to the bar being so low? We are deep in a literacy crisis, changes overdue regarding this inexcusable lack of equity in education. We have failed to establish a system of trust. How can we get a student to trust us if we ignore and don't appropriately address their reality? Kids may not have the vocabulary yet for those conversations, but not talking about it shuts them down and ruins the spirit. As leaders, we are presented with opportunities to evaluate if our words match our actions in ways that reach large numbers of people. We don't go, we don't do it wrong on purpose, but we are doing it wrong. Another hard truth comes to the topic of blaming the child instead of the system. What about these consequences? What does that mean down the line in graduation rates, mental health, risk-taking behavior, oppositional defined disorder, and more? According to the world famous ACE study, Acute Childhood Experience Study, childhood trauma correlates strongly to poor adult mental and physical health. Would anyone argue that a child in this category of struggling readers isn't experiencing trauma? Are we going to sit by and continue to watch it happen with our eyes wide open? Our children don't have the opportunity to opt out the way that the adults do. When are we, the adults, going to take responsibility? When is literacy going to get the serious time and attention it deserves? After the next bond referendum, the next facilities restructure, the next pandemic, the next change in administration, the next election, there is always going to be a next. Life is now, and time is the one thing these kids can't get back. One of our own White Bear students testified at the Senate a few years ago and said this. The kids I feel bad for the worst are the third and fourth graders. They've already been failed by the system and have so far to go yet. Literacy changes the trajectory of one's life. We are failing to teach a large percentage of our children to read. This is our fault. Again, it's time to take responsibility. I'll say it another way. Education and the ability to read well is a big equalizer. The majority of this genetic brain type remain unidentified and unremediated with prescriptive science of reading recommended by researchers in the Minnesota Department of Education. This is also known as structured literacy and not what we are currently delivering. This is the base for the many new laws that have been passed over the past few years, including mandatory screening going to effect here in 2020. The civil rights movement is getting bigger and quickly. It is no longer a community of widespread ignorance. I applaud the autistic community for organizing, raising awarenesses, and services. It is finally happening in the dyslexic community as well. Here in White Bear Lake, we have a growing group of parents with dyslexic children. Many are spending their hard-earned money to pay for structured literacy tutoring because it works and what they have experienced previously in school did not. Even more commonly are those at a loss because this financial option is not available to their circumstances. They have little choice but to watch their kids fail and suffer the consequences. We are in a system that feeds the Matthew effect. The rich get richer and the poor get poorer. Groups like ours exist all over the state, but especially in the Twin Cities. Ourselves and others have developed organized communication pathways and shared which schools and programs have to offer. In addition to how to help one's child, discussions also include topics such as mediations and lawsuits. One of which is a Minnetoka family that followed due process, and the judge ruled in their favor that the district had failure of FAP, Free Appropriate Public Education. The district has appealed this, and the ruling will be announced this coming December. As a fellow public servant and taxpayer, I'm disturbed, and I bet you are, too. I want to acknowledge and applaud some of our high-quality staff that have been a part of these conversations and have started trying to figure out what to do about this. In particular, Cynthia Mueller, Lori Felton, and our recently retired Anne Melwitz. It takes courage to lead with grace and vulnerability. I commend their actions. Well, this is wonderful. It's simply not enough. Too little, too late for so many. For every day, month, and year that continues to go by, we miss those windows. It's fair to acknowledge hurdles such as the fact that we need more qualified teachers. We have 13 years to recruit a future teacher while they are still in our schools as children. What can we do to entice them to come back as adults? We're missing opportunities. It was written in the press that we have over 200 students less this year than previous. We've all done the math on what that fiscally equates to and are concerned it might not be temporary. Some are concerned. While much of it is due to the panic, pandemic, parents may find that alternative options are better equipped for learning differences. We have a better chance of keeping those kids in our public schools if we can do the same. So what is appropriate? To wait and see what the current limited efforts bring? To land it on a small few to figure it out who are stretched already? To look back and say, oh, we tried that, but it didn't work? When it didn't work because it wasn't done with enough fidelity? These are big questions for a big problem. Conversations are a great place to start. A work-study session on the topic allows time for considering options such as hiring a dyslexia specialist. Do we not all agree that when we know better, we do better? I leave you with my favorite quote, "The bigger the problem, the greater the potential." Thanks.
Thank you, Erin. And Dr. Kazarchek, if you could follow up with her, that would be wonderful. Okay, we have another individual. Could you state your name, please, and what part of the district you're from?
Erin, you're shorter than me, apparently. My name is Josh Berger. I'm from Hugo. I have had three sons through the district. Our youngest is at Central currently. And I want to recognize the unusual times we're in. Obviously, the format is quite obvious to that. And I also recognize the Herculean efforts that have gone into planning for this school year. Certainly an unusual time, and I also believe that everyone's making their best faith efforts to make the school year right. And especially in the political context that we're in right now. It's an unusual time all the way around. I think we can recognize that no matter what side of the political spectrum that we're on. The, putting aside politics, you know, what I'm not here tonight is to advocate that we put kids back in school. I think that's still something up to the state and the CDC and the Department of Health and Human Services, as well as the school district, to decide when that's the right time. I trust that effort. Although I will admit to being a bit flummoxed by the amount of youth athletics that's being done out in parks and other areas without social distancing and without masks. I have a hard time reconciling that with the practices and safeguards that we have in place within classrooms. That, I think, as a school board, is something important for you to look into and address. It doesn't seem equitable, especially to those students that are practicing those safeguards and best practices in the classroom. But the reason I'm here tonight is speaking about the current class format as relates to whether it's distant learning or hybrid model, and more specifically around the component of synchronous and asynchronous instruction. At the beginning of the school year this year, there was a student guide that was sent out, pretty comprehensive. I think a lot of thoughtfulness went into that guide and the FAQ that accompanied it. And one of those sections in that guide that I want to read to you that I think is important to cement this conversation is the description of what at-home days would look like to our students. Specifically, the guide says, "At-home days," and here's the bullet points, "view live or recorded direct instruction, many lessons for social, emotional learning, reading, writing, math, science, and social studies." Bullet point two, asynchronous completion of learning board activities that are aligned to learning goals. And that's what it lists. In function, what I've experienced with our child at Central Middle School, and this is over the past 20 days, and also speaking to their instructors and the principal of Central Middle School, is that at-home days are truly asynchronous learning instruction days. There is no component of synchronous instruction that's occurring in those days. Functionally, what our child is receiving, and all the children, at least at Central Middle School, I can't speak for the other schools, are receiving are, in the hybrid model or in the distance learning model, are two functional days of instruction. Now, there is a certain amount of kambuki theater that's going on about what that two days of instruction looks like. And the kambuki theater is this, is that because the students are in class and they're only focusing on three classes at a time, and the class sizes are smaller, that the depth and the level of that instruction has a multiplier effect to the amount of hours that they're receiving synchronous instruction. And I'll just say that I don't buy into that. I think that that is math that doesn't really make sense to me. The flat-out, easy math on it is they're receiving two days of instruction, and in three days, they're at home and they're being self-directed, however you might want to define that. And I think that's egregious to our student population, especially in the context of the bonding referendum that occurred last year, the largest in the history of the state, which, on the one hand, I think was the right thing for us to do as a school district. On the other hand, it really seems to be that we're sawing the limb of the tree that we're sitting off on right now, educationally speaking. Because it really points back to that if we really believe that this learning method of really two days of synchronous instruction is the right one, what is the reason for improving any of the facilities that we have in the first place? It really, it's incongruent with each other. So to sum it up, I really think it's important as a board that if you're not engaged currently with Dr. Gillespie and the school administration about how synchronous instruction is being done, it's something that's important. I especially think in the heels of what Erin was just talking about with dyslexic children and children's with other, you know, neurodiverse needs that our neurotypicals don't have the same troubles with, it becomes more, even more unequitable to those students. If they're at home trying to navigate life primarily through video and remote instruction that is not synchronous in nature, I think it becomes a civil rights issue of sorts, too, as well for those children. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. I appreciate the efforts that you're making out there. I really hope that you take some time to figure out the synchronous and asynchronous component of instruction. I think that's a gap right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. And Dr. Kazarchek, if you would follow up with Mr. Berger as well. Okay. And are there any others? Seeing none, I guess we will move on then to the information items, part of the agenda, and that would be the superintendent's report. Dr. Kazarchek?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chapman, members of the board. All right, the district has created a COVID-19 dashboard that lists the 14-day case rate by county, district COVID-19 cases, weekly reporting, and process for individual notifications. You can find the dashboard linked from the ISD624.org/fall2020 page of the website. With no school days approaching this Thursday and Friday, we wanted to provide resources to families who are considering traveling during the break. It is important to watch for COVID-19 symptoms at all times, but it is especially important after traveling. Please see information regarding state and international travel at the district's website. I want to take a moment to comment on how the data are trending in the three school district counties. Last week's report showed a 14-day case rate per 10,000 as follows. Ramsey County at 19.98, Washington County at 20.96, and Anoka at 25.96. So the threshold of 20 to 30 calls for hybrid at all grade levels, which is where we are currently. And the threshold of 30 to 50 calls for hybrid at the elementary and distance learning at the middle school and high school levels. So I had hoped that we would be at the point where we were going to begin discussing bringing students back for more in-person learning at the elementary level, but we are no longer at that point. In fact, it is more likely, given the way that data are trending, that we will be discussing a shift to distance learning for our middle school and high school students in the coming weeks. All right, so I'm certainly out of, we usually don't have a conversation during this, but I'm happy to, if you have board members, if you have questions. But I just wanted to make that statement because we're getting, you know, we get comments on either side of the argument wanting more time in school or less time in school. And the reality is the data are trending the wrong way, and that's where we're at, so. Okay, I want to thank those who joined me for our first Coffee with Dr. K last week. Future Coffee with Dr. K events are scheduled from 11:30 to 12:30 on January 7th and from 4:30 to 5:30 on April 6th. Unity Day will take place this year on October 21st. In celebration, district students and staff members will wear orange that day to show that we are together against bullying and united for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. All right, White Bear Lake Area Schools is hiring for a variety of positions, offering both school day and out-of-school time hours. Full and part-time options are available, and many positions offer flexible hours if needed to accommodate family schedules. The district is seeking paraprofessionals, community services, and recreation staff, and coaches, and more. Find details on the employment page of the district website. The following celebrations are being recognized in October. October is National Principals Month. National Custodial Worker Day and World Teachers Day were both earlier this month. October 12th through the 16th is National School Lunch Week. Today is Indigenous Peoples' Day. And then coming up, we have October 15th marks the end of Hispanic Heritage Month. October 16th is National Bosses' Day. And October 18th through the 24th, National School Bus Safety Week and National Safe Schools Week. All right, we will continue to honor our tradition of recognizing students for state and national level accomplishments, but we are mixing it up a bit this year. Starting this fall, the recognition will be accomplished through a mention during the superintendent's report and distribution of certificates and bear pins through their coaches and advisors. We will not be hosting in-person recognition ceremonies prior to the school board meetings. A reminder to families, in the revised calendar approved at the September school board regular meeting, Wednesday, October 14th, will be a school day. Hybrid Group A students will meet in person, while hybrid Group B students will be at home learning. Distance learning students will be at home learning that day as well. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to our student liaison, Jennifer Adams, for a student report.
Before I start today, I'd like to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day and also recognize that we're still on Dakota land. So good evening. This week, students have started their fifth week of either full-time distance or hybrid learning. Everyone is still adjusting pretty well, along with our football season has started, and it's available to watch online virtually. And we played Stillwater last Friday. And then the girls volleyball team has a meet at Eastridge this Friday. So let's support our girls volleyball and go Bears.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. And that's it. Mr. Chapman?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Kazarchek and Jennifer. We move on then to the discussion items. And the first item on the list is the October enrollment update. And Mr. Wald, is that you?
Good evening, Acting Chair Chapman, members of the board, Dr. Kazarchek, and our student representatives. At our September 14th board meeting, I assured that I'd be coming back in October with our October 1st count. The October 1 enrollment count is a critical date in schools because it's essentially the starting enrollment for which our M.D. funding is based upon. The COVID impact on our students has, and their families, of course, has been significant. And families across the nation, certainly Minnesota and here in White Bear Lake, have struggled trying to figure out what's the right learning opportunity for their families. And it's led, in some cases, families to choose other options for learning. Just last week, our Association of Metropolitan School Districts, AMSD, completed a survey of metropolitan school districts, asking for initial reports on budgetary impacts as well as enrollment impacts of the start of the school year. Of the 34, 34 of the 37 responding districts indicated a decline in enrollment this year, typically in that 1% to 5% range. In the kindergarten classes, it was significantly higher than that. In White Bear Lake, we're down about 2% from where we were last year and about 3.4% from where we budgeted for this school year. This slide shows our elementary schools and the difference from October 1 enrollment, or October 1, 2019 enrollment to October 1, 2020 enrollment. You can see on the bottom right-hand, a negative number of 217 at our elementary levels from October to October. It's interesting, too, to look at cohorts to see as a cohort move from kindergarten to first grade and third grade to fourth grade. What was the experience with that cohort? And in all of our cohorts, we had declining enrollment, some, just a few students. But at the elementary level, it's pretty consistent that our cohorts lost some students. This looks primarily at secondary, and then we total it at the bottom. But secondary enrollment from October last year, again, to October this year. And you can see, follow the gray line from middle school all the way to the right, and it shows a plus four. High school is a plus 15 for a total secondary increase of 19 students from last year. Or, excuse me, a difference of 38 from last year and 19 from budgeted. So surprisingly, actually, we saw a little increase in secondary. The elementary total, though, is significantly lower, and we're left with a loss of 224 students from what we built our budget upon this year. This slide really provides a summary of that. Important to this is the funding impact. Down 224 students from budgeted. Leaves us with a loss of about $2.6 million for 2020, 21 school year. Typically, school districts have less students at the end as students find, throughout the year, tend to move on, find different alternative settings. Usually, we have less students. So it's, would be typical at the end of this school year that we'd see a slight decline in enrollment as well. And that may put our budgetary shortfalls in closer to the $3 to $3.5 million range. And again, as we review the AMSD reports, and this is just an initial report. These are just where school districts are today. And most school districts are kind of where we are, where we're starting to figure out, well, what are the budgetary impacts and what adjustments can you make in the short term? Operating a school right now, even with 224 less students, doesn't require less staff. In fact, we're in a position where we really need more staff, not less. And so making mid-year budgetary reductions is certainly going to be challenging for us. We worked throughout the fall to put a budget adjustment together. We work throughout the fall to put a budget adjustment together, and if you recall that we typically bring that to you in the January work session for approval in February, and we'll be doing that again this year and looking for ways that we can sharpen our pencil on the budget to make up for some of those losses. As we look at that AMSD report, though, it's not, most school districts are in that six to ten percent range for kindergarten reductions this year. As many families just decided this wasn't, this might not be the best year to start kindergarten, sit it out for a year and see how next year looks. One school district in the metro found, had an eighteen percent reduction in their kindergarten enrollment. We were at about seven percent. Also reported to you in September, the percentage of students participating in hybrid learning versus distance learning. We're at seventy-eight point four four percent in our elementary hybrid, twenty-one point five six are choosing distance learning. That number's gone up just a tick, about seventeen students since our September report. At the secondary level, we're at seventy-two point eight percent doing hybrid and twenty-seven point two doing distance, distance learning. So we're seeing more of our secondary students selecting distance learning, and it might make sense as more of our secondary students are capable of being alone during the day. Overall, bottom right, you see our distance learner percentage is twenty-four point six percent across the school district, and that has ticked up just a little bit, about one percent since September. You also asked at the September board meeting that I report back to you participation in distance learning versus hybrid by race, free and reduced lunch, and special ed, and so this, this is a really busy chart. It's got a ton of information on it. Hopefully, we've had some time to look at it before the meeting, but you can see that our students of color are choosing distance learning at a significantly higher rate than our white students. Our students of color make up about twenty-eight point four percent of our student population, and when you look at that whole group together, it's about forty-five percent of our distance learners. Our white students make up about seventy-one point six percent. When you look at free and reduced lunch, that's slightly higher, thirty point eight two versus twenty-four point six four, and we know demographically, we have a higher percentage of students of color that qualify for free and reduced lunch services as well. In special education, the number is actually ticks down a little bit in participation, and it should be noted that our students of color are not higher, more highly represented in our special education program than our general demographic percentages. But this certainly underscores the need for us to continue our work around equity and make sure that we're supporting and being attentive to our students of color as it's a, it's a bit of different experience for many of our students of color. So that's where we're at in terms of enrollment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wald. Are there any questions or comments, concerns from the board at this point in time that you'd like to raise? Any questions? I've got one. I believe you had mentioned that thirty-four of the thirty-seven districts, if I heard right, have experienced much like us, decline in enrollment. The three districts that apparently, if I heard correctly, there are three districts that are either held the same or maybe even increased enrollment. Do we know which districts those are? And I guess more importantly, do we have any idea as to what their models are and what they are doing to keep their enrollment up?
Do you have those, Tim?
I don't have them with me.
Fridley?
One was Minnetoka.
Fridley, Minnetoka. And Richfield reported no decrease in enrollment. They would be, they would all be hybrid, I believe, learning model.
K-12 hybrid, or do we know if there's a split between secondary?
I don't believe any of those are full in-person elementary. I can verify that, but I don't think so.
Okay.
The report just came out today, so it's just, it's fresh information for us.
Sure. Yeah, that would be good, good to know.
What's interesting about those three districts, I think, I think we'd find that those, those three districts all have a very high net gain in open enrollment.
Okay.
Which could be, I mean, could be a factor, I don't know.
Sure.
So, yeah.
But to get, get that kind of open enrollment, I'm wondering what they're doing to have that kind of?
There, in terms of their base model, they're hybrid. There's variations amongst them.
Okay.
But I believe they're all three in hybrid.
Okay. If we could get more information on that, that would be great. I would appreciate that. I certainly don't know of the other board, but if we could all get that, that would be great.
Yep.
Okay. No other questions then? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wald. And then we move on to the first reading of a whole host of policies here, and I'm going to just go down the list, just for those in the audience and those who may be watching or will be watching this board meeting. Essentially, what the process for policies is every, every year or at least every few years, the various policies in the district come up for renewal, or review, I should say, and the policy committee of the board, as well as administration, goes through those various policies, makes adjustments as needed or as felt to be needed with input from the MSBA, the Minnesota School Boards Association. And then, once that occurs, the policies then come to the board for first reading, which we have here. And then after the first reading, they are on the agenda at the next meeting, at which time they are acted upon after the second reading. So with that, I will just go through the list here. We have Policy three oh one, School District Administration; Policy three oh two, Superintendent; Policy three oh three, Superintendent Selection; Policy three oh four, Superintendent's Contract and Duties; Policy three oh five, Implementation. I'm not sure what implementation that is referring to offhand. Policy three oh six, Administrator Code of Ethics; Policy four ninety-six, Faculty and Staff Dress and Appearance Policy; Policy five twenty, Student Surveys; Policy five twenty-one, Student Disability Nondiscrimination; and Policy eight oh seven, Health and Safety. We've all received these policies in the board packet that has come out, and does anybody have any questions with regard to any of those policies or comments to make?
Policy three oh five is Policy Implementation, so there's just a word missing.
Oh, okay. Policy Implementation, okay. Any questions, comments? Okay. So those will appear on next month's agenda for the second reading and for action. With that, we will move on to the list. We have fair number of items under operational items to go through, and with that, we have action on the approval of refunding Unika Elementary Bond, General Obligation Bonds, twenty twenty C. And Mr. Wald, looks like you are taking that, too.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chapman. This is a second time that we're coming to you in those last few months about refine, or refunding lease purchase certificates, taking advantage of very favorable interest rates. If you recall that in July, you approved the refunding and refinancing of leases for the gymnasiums at Lake Ayers, Matoska, and Willow Elementary Schools, and those, refunding of those leases led to a savings of eight hundred ninety thousand dollars. Our consultants from Ellers have recently been working on refunding our certificates at Unika Elementary School, and at our last meeting, you authorized Chair Mullen and Superintendent Kazmercheck to approve those sales. We were anticipating a savings of between ninety and a hundred ten thousand dollars. The sale of the refunding certificates occurred last week, and we've invited Shelby McQuay from Ellers, Inc. to share the results of those sales, of that sale tonight. So Shelby, come on up.
Thanks for having me back tonight. And it's no surprise, given Mr. Wald's introduction of me last week, that I dropped a kid off to soccer practice on the way here. So nice to have the local meetings so I can cover, hit two birds with one stone this evening. So I'm just going to present real quick the results of this sale. As Mr. Wald said, the bonds were sold on Thursday. Great results. They fell within the parameter that the board approved, so those were authorized and sent back to the underwriter for approval on that day, and so this is a ratification of that sale. The results were great. So a refunding is just like a refinancing of a mortgage, but you don't extend the term rate. So you just had one maturity left, and you're just going to refund that one maturity for savings, and it'll be paid off next year. You received three bids. The Bank of New York was the winning bid. We had estimated during pre-sale about five points, a point five six percent interest rate, and that turned out to be the highest bid. The low bid came in at point three four. And you did also receive a premium, so what we anticipated borrowing in order to refund this was eight point nine one five million, and that would net you some additional money. The underwriters would pay a premium to take your bonds, and so you'd have to borrow less, and that premium came in higher. So the borrowing went from eight point nine one five down to eight point six seven five, so less borrowing to pay off that same nine million dollars. So good news, both on the interest cost and then on the lower borrowing amount. So what that means is that you're saving two hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred eighty-three dollars in overall savings. That was not reflected on what you sent to the county for the TNT notices, so following in the actual property tax statements will be, will show that two hundred and eleven thousand lower than what you present during your TNT process. So the ratification tonight, or the, the action tonight by the board is the ratification of the sale, and I can just walk through very quickly the attachments here that just reflect pretty much what I've said. So the three bids came from, no local bidders out of Minneapolis, but Bank of New York, UBS out of New York, and then Barrett out of Milwaukee, the lowest bidder being Bank of New York. So the sources and uses page just show that premium that, that you received and the deposit to the current refunding account at nine million. The next two pages just show the prior debt service schedule and then the current debt service schedule with the interest cost, the true interest cost of point three four. And then the final kind of numbers page there is the debt comparison page showing the two hundred and eleven thousand dollars of savings on the levy for that payment in two one twenty-two. You also will have these funds on hand for a few months before your old, your refunded bonds are paid off, and so you'll generate some interest earnings that will just go into the debt service fund and that will flow through as a reduction to taxpayers in future years. The rating report is just attached here for your reference, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And I do have documents to sign tonight. However, the chair, they need to also be signed by the chair, which we can then just wait for the chair to sign because we also need to wait for the treasurer to sign. So I can leave the documents with Jody.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board regarding this item? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for having me.
And with that, the, we need to take action on this. Do I hear a motion to move ahead with, with this bond refunding?
I can read, do you want me to read? I'll read the recommended action. So if one of you would please move to approve the resolution relating to lease purchase financing and refunding certificates of participation, Series twenty twenty C, authorizing the issuance, determining the form and details, ratifying the award of the sale, and authorizing the execution, delivery, and registration as presented.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Kazmercheck. Now with that, any, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Newmaster is second, and with that, are there, is there any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Was that you, Ms. Beloit?
Yes, it was.
Sorry about that. All right.
Master.
Yeah. Any discussion on this before we take a vote? Okay. Seeing none, would the clerk please read the roll?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
And with that, we have refunding that will be taking place or has taken place and just approved now, so moving on, we will go to operational item, action on the Matoska Elementary bids. And Mr. Wald?
Yes, thank you. At our September work session, we presented an overview of the Phase One construction projects and the timeline for the RFP and bid openings. Tonight, we have four projects for your approval. Each is a different action item on the agenda. The first one is regarding the Matoska Elementary Project. We have the bid opening on October first. The Matoska Elementary Project includes media center renovations, creations of EL room, extended day office, specialist room, and freezer space, as well as small addition of two classrooms. With me tonight is Jason Peterson and his team from Kraus Anderson, who conducted the RFP and opening, and I'll invite them up now, and Jason can give an overview of that process and the results.
Thank you for the time. My name is Mark Ulrich. I'm a project manager with Kraus Anderson Construction. I'd like to request the approval of awarding the contracts for the Matoska Project, Matoska International Elementary Addition and Renovations Project. That includes a classroom addition with flex spaces, new lockers, and restroom, media commons remodel, restroom remodel, and minor classroom remodeling throughout the school. Overall, we had eighteen work scopes that were bid out for the project. We had very, very good coverage throughout those work scopes, consisting of around a hundred and eleven bidders that submitted proposals for it. And with that, I guess I'd like to request the approval for the total amount of the contracts, which is two million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. Is there any questions anyone has?
Are there any questions from the board for Jason?
I have a question.
Okay. Ms. Ellison?
I'm not sure if this is a question for you or for Mr. Wald and Dr. Kazmercheck, but in looking at the, the total amount of the bid, how does that align? And this is, I guess, a question for all the other bids. How are those aligning with the original estimates that we made about how much these projects would cost?
Good question. Yeah, all of the bids that we're presenting tonight are slightly below the original budget that we presented, so it's going well so far. Our team from Kraus Anderson are experts at estimating the cost of the projects, and so they work very closely with our design team from Wald Architects and Engineers to get, make sure that we're staying on budget and on get, make sure that we're staying on budget and on time. But all the projects have been slightly underneath the budgeted amount.
Any further questions? Okay, so if I could have a motion to approve the recommendation to award construction contracts for the addition and remodel at Matoska International Elementary in the amount of 2,163,701 dollars as presented. Is there a motion? So moved. Okay. Motion by Dr. Arcand, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, was that Dr. Newmaster? Okay, just to be sure this time. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Okay, with the, seeing none, would the clerk please read the roll?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
And moving on, we have the action on the Vadniss Heights Elementary bids. Mr. Wald?
Yeah, so the Vadniss Elementary project went to bid on October 7th. That project includes renovation of the media center, orchestra, and extended day spaces, as well as creation of freezer space. We've been, like Matoska, that design, schematic design process occurred in April and May. User groups met May through September, and the construction will start this fall, with it being ready for the opening of school in September of 2021. Again, I'll invite Jason, coming up, Jason Peterson from Kraus-Anderson to talk about that project.
Good evening, Chair Chapman, Superintendent Kazmercheck, and school board members. My name is Rob Gimelke. I'm project manager for Kraus-Anderson on the Vadniss Heights Elementary School project. Here to present our contract award recommendations for the construction, which included the scope that Mr. Wald had just described. On October 7th, we took 125 bids for 19 different scopes of work. We've reviewed all those and vetted all of the, the bids, and are presenting 17 of those scopes tonight for a total of 1,209,311 dollars. Two of the scopes that we're not presenting tonight are two of the smaller scopes. One was the final cleaning, which we did not receive any bids, and the other is landscaping, which we received one bid, but it was significantly high, and we felt that we could do better if we rebid or requoted that particular scope out. So, those two are not included in this recommendation. Any questions?
Seeing none at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the recommendation to award construction contracts for the Vadniss Heights Elementary addition and remodel bids in the amount of 1,209,311 dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Ellison made a motion, is there a second?
I get it.
Ms. Thompson has seconded the motion. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, would the clerk please read the roll?
Newmaster?
I'm slow. You taking the roll? I couldn't hear you.
Yes, taking the roll.
Okay, aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Okay, moving on to the next item, we have the action on Willow Lane Elementary bids.
Our Kraus-Anderson team conducted the Willow Lane bids and was at October 8th. And again, those bids came in under budget. Willow Lane is, will see a renovation of the media center, creation of an orchestra space, and a freezer. And again, that user groups met throughout the summer. Construction will begin this fall, and the project will be ready for the opening of school in 2021. And I'll invite again a member of our team from Kraus-Anderson to present this.
Good evening. My name is Andy Thompson, project manager with Kraus-Anderson. Thank you guys for having us here tonight. As mentioned, this is the results for Willow Lane. I had 26 work scopes total for this one. We had 149 bids for this, which is pretty good coverage. Similar to Rob, we're going to recommend that we reject the work scope for landscape. We only had one bidder, and it was not within, within our budget. So, I think we can do better quoting that direct or rebidding as well. So, that being said, we'd like to recommend Willow Lane be approved for the amount of 1,110,579 and 66 cents. Any questions on the Willow Lane?
Okay, seeing none. I will entertain a motion to approve the recommendation to award construction contracts for the Willow Lane Elementary addition and remodel in the amount of 1,110,579 dollars and 66 cents. Is there a motion?
So moved. Beloit?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Beloit. And is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Arcand, second. Any discussion, questions? Otherwise, would the clerk read the roll?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Okay. Moving on to the next one, and that would be the action on South Campus gym addition bids.
Thank you. Again, we reviewed this project at our last meeting. This is the largest of the projects that we're presenting tonight. And we had to pivot during the design phase of this project because the storm shelter requirement caused us to take a different look at it. And so, we ended up scaling the project back a little bit, and we'll be using some of the funds that were originally budgeted this, to this project to help cover the storm shelter build in Phase 2 of the South Campus project. Remember that Phase 2 of the South Campus project is really for Sunrise Park Middle School. And who from our Kraus-Anderson team will present this one? Come on up. This is Mark Ulrich. I'll be the project manager for the White Bear Lake High School South Campus Gym Addition project. On October 6th, we solicited bids for 22 work scopes for the gym addition project. Overall, we had 186 bidders, which consists of great coverage throughout all of those work scopes. Again, as Tim had said, this is for a new gymnasium addition, restrooms, storage area, and new kitchen equipment in the kitchen area. So, total, total bids, or total dollar value for those 22 work scopes complete comes out to be 4,288,720 dollars. Is there any questions for the South Campus project?
Okay, I've got, got one. Mr. Wald, this is probably for you. If you could refresh your memory, or mine anyway, as to what the storm shelter issue was, I believe you had mentioned it before, and I can't recall what it was.
Sure, the storm shelter issue was related to a building code change in December that went into effect in April. And so, the change of the code came after the original scope design of our projects and after the vote, the November vote. And so, it's a significant change because building the storm shelters is an expensive add. And so, hats off to our team from Wald and Kraus-Anderson, who have done an excellent job of problem solving that. And part of that problem solving was figuring out how to make those two, the Phase 1 and Phase 2 projects at South Campus work together, and working with the city of White Bear Lake to get approval on the process. Yeah, so that was unexpected a year ago, and when we went to the voters in November. And so, we're just adjusting and trying to make it work.
So, storm shelter is in the gym itself then, or exactly where, where is the?
The storm shelter is not going to be in the gym on this project, because it's, it's a bigger building and more difficult with the wide span to add the storm shelter. So, that's going to be in the classroom addition at South Campus in Phase 2.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, seeing none. I will be looking for a motion to approve the recommendation to award construction contracts for the South Campus gym addition in the amount of 4,288,720 dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, move, motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second. Newmaster?
Okay, second by Dr. Newmaster. If there are no further questions, we'll move on with the vote. Would the clerk please read the roll?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for attending tonight and for giving us an update and, and details on, on these various items. With that, we move on to action on the life and long-term disability insurance rates effective January 1, 2021. And, ah, Mr. Mons, it appears to be you speaking to this.
We'll jazz it up with a little life and LTD. Always a little pizzazz there. Good evening. So, here we went out for bid for both our long-term disability and supplemental life policies, and that was very successfully done. With our respect to long-term disability, we're recommending a switch from our current provider to the standard that will come with a savings of just over 100,000 dollars. And then, on the supplemental life front, we're looking to stay with Madison National with the savings, though, over the current policy at approximately 25,000 dollars.
Any questions for Mr. Mons? Just for clarification, did you say that the second number is for the life renewal? The first one's for the disability renewal?
That's correct.
Okay, great, okay. No questions, further questions from the board? Would the clerk read the roll after, I guess, I read what the motion is to be, and that is to move approval of the district's change in life and long-term disability vendors, including the rate change for supplemental life effective January 1, 2021 as presented. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Dr. Arcand, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Any further questions, comments? If not, would the clerk please read the roll?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Okay. We're charging along on these. Then the next one, Mr. Mons, I would guess that's you, action on health and dental insurance rates effective January 1, 2021.
Yes, indeed. We had a pretty steady year, so after going out for a renewal on our health, on the health insurance front, the, the recommendation is to stay with Preferred 1 as our TPE, and then we're also recommending a 2% increase. By taking that 2% increase to our medical plans, we will be able to continue to help build our reserve as well. So, just make a note of that. I'd also say, it's not showing up tonight, however, because it's not going to come with a, with a change in vendor. However, we also very successfully went out to bid with our pharmacy benefit manager, and we will see some significant savings moving into next year, which should help keep our overall rates manageable over the next couple of years. So, again, a really promising round of, of bids here. And then, on the dental side, we're able to recommend a 0% increase.
It's relatively good news compared to what we've seen in the past.
Indeed.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Mons?
I have a question. This is Deb Beloit.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Beloit.
I was just wondering, so we've taken COVID into, into consideration for what our reserves are going to, are going to be?
Yes, we have. So, we've taken, we duly plan recognize some savings through the early parts of the spring, and we have taken into account what we believe the effect of perhaps delays in seeking medical service will cost the plan moving forward. So, that has been taken into account when we, and is reflected in the recommendation for the 2% increase.
How do we figure that?
So, we're figuring that based on analytical models that are, that we get feedback on, both through our TPE, so that's Preferred 1 in that instance, and then also through our consultants, so that we get kind of an unbiased view there, too. So, we get a couple of different data points when we're looking at those renewal numbers. And so, this year, it was especially important to try to stay ahead of it and making sure that we're not putting ourselves in a precarious position moving forward. And so, they looked at the kinds of procedures that had, that had been accessed, those that perhaps hadn't, where we were lagging, and that lag is built into the number. So, in fact, we would have been looking at something that would have probably been either below a 0% increase or a 0% increase if we were not taking into account both that claims leg factor because of the pandemic, and then also our desire to continue to build our reserve balance.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? All right. Just for board's sake, full disclosure on my part, I'm not going to be voting on this, or actually will be abstaining, because Preferred 1 is a wholly owned subsidiary of my boss, or my, the company, my employer, Fairview Health Services. So, I don't believe it would be appropriate for me to necessarily vote on this. But if no other discussion, then I will move ahead, looking for a motion here to move the, I guess we need two motions the way it looks, is that correct?
Just one.
You could, I think you could combine them.
Okay. So, we have two recommendations from administration. One is to approve the district's health premium rates effective January 1, 2021, and the other is to approve the district's dental insurance premium rates, also effective January 1, 2021. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Thompson has made motion, is there a second?
Second. March.
Dr. Newmaster is second. Any last chance or any comments, questions? Otherwise?
Mr. Chapman?
Yes, Ms. Beloit.
Yeah, is it possible for, I have a really hard time, you're coming in and out of the microphone. Yeah, is it possible for, I have a really hard time, you're coming in and out of the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Is it possible to get closer? Everyone there, I know Marge just said she's having the same thing. You guys are kind of coming in and out, and it's hard for us to hear you guys.
So it's, it's basically a bunch of us, not just me, but several of us, the way it sounds?
Well, you're doing the most talking, so it's mainly you.
Okay, I get the, I get the point. All right, thank you, Ms. Beloit. I've moved it further. Hopefully you can hear me better now, so.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, would the clerk then please read the roll?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I wasn't thinking. Change that, please, to an abstention.
All right.
Okay. All right, thank you. And we move on to the next item, and that is action on memorandum of understanding with White Bear Lake area educators. Mr. Mons, I take it that's you since you're still sitting there, so.
Yes, indeed.
Okay.
All right. And so we worked together throughout the late stages of the summer here to memorialize some of the planning that we had done in preparation for the 2020-21 school year. And so we do have a, a final draft of memorandum of understanding, the purpose for which is to clarify and just make sure that there's something in writing for employees to, to see and interact with. The goal being to just outline the safety measures that we've committed to, changes to the duty day that were necessary in order to operate in a hybrid or distance learning model, and also just making sure that it's very clear to employees the access that they have to time off and leave provisions. So with that, I would recommend the approval of that memorandum of understanding.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mons. Any questions? Question I have, I'm not recalling that one offhand. If the board had seen it, maybe we have, and I've just totally spaced it. Was that, the details of that sent out to the board?
The details of that was not, were not sent out to the board. So it has not been our practice to, to present final settlements to the board. However, you know, that's something that could certainly change. However, with all of our contract settlements, for instance, we don't have a final copy ready at the time of board approval.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mons.
Yep.
Any further questions? Oh, Newmaster?
I have a question also. If this memorandum of understanding is something that we are going to approve or disapprove, it's kind of hard to do that if you don't know what it is. But I would at least want to know that it is agreed upon happily by both participants, the educators, as well as our district administration and lawyers?
Yes, so this has previously been ratified by the WBLAE.
By, I couldn't hear the end of that.
I'm sorry, by the White Bear Lake area educators.
Okay, so this is something you've discussed every detail of, and they have agreed to it? And you're just asking us to also agree to whatever you've agreed to?
That's correct.
Okay. I think in the past, sometimes, you know, we have known details, but I can understand things are kind of on the fly sometimes. But if it's agreed to, and it's not something that's contentious, that's maybe enough to know at this point.
It's not contentious as we were memorializing the commitments that had already been made through the summer. However, if we do wish to see a final draft, which we did not have prepared yet, we have all of the tentative agreements agreed to. However, we don't have a final draft of the language, as it would appear. That could certainly happen, and we could do that at either the study session or at the next regular board meeting.
I just wondered, as I reflect all the questions that flew around as things got developed and agreed on, and is this a document that, if you get your final version, that, and, and we are obviously in support, if everybody's in support, but that could be amended if there's some new issue that arises in this surprising year?
Well, we're certainly going to have many issues that arise, you know. And for the most part, we're dealing with those outside of a memorandum of understanding within any of our collectively bargained agreements. So for the most part, we're doing that by meeting, working together, and just having conversation throughout the year. So we're having weekly conversations with our, with our teachers. We're having bi-weekly conversations with our other organized groups as well. And so, you know, we're keeping those conversations going, certainly. Typically, if we were going to need another provision that would actually affect a bargain, a collectively bargained agreement, that would come in the form of an additional memorandum of understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board with regard to this? Ms. Thompson?
You, you said it had been agreed to in the past. Do you have a timeline of when it was agreed to?
In terms of reaching a tentative agreement?
Yes.
Approximately two weeks ago.
Okay. I don't know how to do this. I personally would prefer to see the language before we move on this item. And I don't, I'm just reading Robert's Rules of Order on tabling a motion. I don't think that's the right case that we're in right now. Maybe Jody knows how to do this the proper way, but I would move that we not vote on this currently until we see the language. I don't know how to say that the right way.
Yeah, we haven't made a motion yet, so we don't need to table the motion. So my understanding that we can, no, I'm too close, that we don't have to take action.
Okay. Do we move to not take action, or we just?
We can just move it. We could move it to the, what does that mean? We can move it to the next meeting or the first meeting in November as well. There, is it time sensitive with the, with the group? So, okay.
It's not time sensitive in that fashion, and that will certainly give us the time to have something put together that will constitute a final draft with language as it would, as it would go into the agreement.
So that might likely be the November board meeting. Let's not, let's set that as a target. If we can do it sooner, great. If not, we'll target then.
Yep.
Thank you.
I've got one other question, maybe if you're going to be thinking on this or putting something together. My question was the speed of approving it before the details were known. Is this something that negatively impacts teachers who aren't being reimbursed for time off they had to take for quarantine or illness?
No, as I said, as I had stated, this was memorializing the commitments that we had already made. And so anything in the memorandum of understanding is already essentially in full force and effect.
So whether we would agree on it tonight or not, I think waiting isn't going to harm, going to do any harm?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions at this point? All right. So I guess we will see that in the November, in the November agenda. Okay, thank you, Ms. Mons. And the next item that we have is action on revocation of resolution establishing school district primary election system. Dr. Kazrichek, is that you?
That's me. Thank you, Mr. Chapman, members of the board. So at the work session, we had a discussion about revoking the resolution establishing school district primary election, and there appeared to be consensus. And we, we discussed the idea of bringing it here tonight for your consideration. I can tell you, again, just for background, nine out of 332 Minnesota school districts take part in the primary system. If we do not, then that number would be down to eight. We had a primary back in 2015. Voter turnout was between 1 and 2%. So again, we had that conversation. I did, we, Jody helped me find the history on this. So back in May of 2009, the resolution establishing school district primary election system was adopted. And within that, the revocation of it is simply to pass a resolution revoking it. That's all, that's all that's required to do, based on the language contained within. And then I also double-checked with MSBA that that was the proper way to do it, and they confirmed it was, so. So here we are tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kazrichek. Are there any questions relative to this? Otherwise, we'll, I'll be looking for motion. Okay, seeing none, I guess. Is there a motion to revoke the resolution establishing school district primary elections or election system? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Ellison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster.
Beloit.
Oh, I'm sorry. The two of you coming over, maybe it's my hearing. It sounds so much like Dr. Newmaster, too. Okay, so we've got that. Ms. Beloit, second. And any further discussion or, or any discussion relative to this? Seeing none, we will take a vote. Would the clerk please read the roll?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Okay. And then item number 10 on the operational items list is action on designation, designation of identified official with authority for the MDE external user access recertification system. That's a mouthful. And Dr. Kazrichek, is that you?
Yeah, it's me. Thank you, Mr. Chapman, members of the board. So this is an annual approval item. We normally do this, I believe we do it in July. We overlooked it this July, and so we're just doing it now. So it just establishes, MDE requires board to take action annually, and it's just naming the superintendent as the Iowa, the identified official with authority, and that just grants, gives me the authority to approve access to employees to do certain functions on the MDE website, essentially. And then Jody is, is part of the recommended action, too, as, and that's typically what we've done. So then she helps to manage that, so.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Kazrichek. And tell you what, let's just take the motion first, and then we can discuss any questions. So the, the recommendation is to approve Dr. Kazrichek, superintendent, and Jody Reber, executive assistant to the superintendent and her replacement as White Bear Lake area schools identified official with authority as required by the Minnesota Department of Education. Is there a motion? Ms. Thompson has moved the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Arcand is second. Is there any discussion relative to this? Ms. Ellison?
I just have one question. At the bottom, I'm just wondering, unless I've received a promotion, it should be Jessica Ellison, school board clerk, or it should be Don Mullin, school board chair?
Uh, yeah, well, Jody, are you here?
Yes. It could be the Jessica, who is where.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just going to change that to clerk, just to make sure I've got that right, so. Okay, I'm good.
Where is Jody? It sounds like a voice from above.
Yeah, she's behind the curtain. Great and powerful Oz.
Pulling the leopards. It's appropriate, I think, isn't it?
There she is. All right. Any further questions, any additional questions, any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk read the roll, please?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Okay. And then the last item, operational item, is the second reading of the school board policies. And those, we have two of those, Policy 412, expense reimbursement, Policy 705 Investments, and these were on the agenda last month for a first reading, so they're up for approval this time around. So let's move with the motion here. Is there a motion to approve these updates to Policy 422, or excuse me, 412, expense reimbursement? If it's okay, I'm going to take these in one fell swoop, or do I need to separate? Okay. And then Policy 705 Investments. Is there a motion to approve these two?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Ellison, second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion on these items? Okay, seeing none, would the clerk please read the roll?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Okay. And then that brings us to discussion, item F.
Kim?
Yes?
I just
Dr. Newmaster?
Want to know where I have a chance to leave one question that I didn't get my mic on fast enough for the fine presentation Tim gave on enrollment. And I just, there was great data, and I have one more question for something that maybe could be answered another time.
Okay.
So whenever I can do that, I would like to.
Do you want, do you want me to connect with you, Marge? This is, this is Wayne.
I, I have trouble understanding you, Mr. Dr. Kazrichek.
Do you want me to reach out to you, either by phone or email? Should I give you a call?
She's having a hard time.
Okay. Maybe she can hear you.
I just had a short question on the data for the kids that are distant learners. And I wondered if our equity team could get some data on the motivation for their choices. It might give us some input for equity planning.
Dr. Newmaster, can you hear me? Okay. Or are you having a hard time hearing me as well? Can you hear me?
The wall gets the award for the clearest presenter, and then it's Mr. Mons.
I guess that answers that question.
Every word.
Okay, all right.
They have the best mic.
Thank you, Mr. Ellison.
The closer you guys are to your mic, the easier it is for us to hear.
Okay. Do you want to maybe try it once more?
I'll try this again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Marge, we'll follow up with you, okay? Either by phone or by email?
Sure. I just think that's a good question that would give us some insight.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Newmaster. And with that, we will move into closed session. We need to take a vote to do that to review, or it's for the review of superintendent's evaluation. And so do I hear a motion to move into closed session at this time?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Thompson has moved the motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Ellison has seconded, and would the clerk please read the roll?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson? Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Okay, we are in closed session. We are back into session, and the second to the last item on the agenda is Board Forum, second only to the adjournment. So are there any items for Board Forum tonight?
Chair, Chapman, I'd have something.
Dr. Arcand, go ahead.
I just want to take a moment to thank our teachers, administrators, and staff for all their hard work so far this year. But I also want to acknowledge that teaching during this pandemic has been hard. It's been very hard. At times, we feel like we are preparing three lessons for each lesson. But during this time, I want to encourage us to share the workload by communicating, by participating in our community of practice. by participating in our community of practice groups. By working together, hopefully, we can reduce some of the workload and stress. The stress levels may be very high right now, so let's take some time to take care of each other. We can get very wrapped up in our planning and teaching, but we need to remember that we also need to take time for ourselves and our families. I want to acknowledge that none of us wanted to teach like this when we started our careers, and I know that we all want our students back in the classroom, but we also want to make sure that the school is safe and healthy, it's a safe and healthy place, that we can ensure each student is allowed to realize their unique talents and abilities. Once again, thank you for your hard work. Please continue to work together, take care of each other, and take time for yourself as we move forward, teaching during a pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Arcand. Are there any other items for board forum? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move that we adjourn the meeting, sir.
Okay, Dr. Arcand has made a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, flip a quarter between you two.
It's, it's Dr. Newmaster.
Okay, Dr. Newmaster has made, or seconded the motion. With that, would the clerk please take the roll?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Bellloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
And we are adjourned.
9:29.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Good night.